Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Atoma City Council meeting. Before we get started, if everybody rise, we're going to say a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. The next item is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is the city administrator's report to council and the citizens. I'll turn it over to Phil Rath, our city administrator.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. So, we're approaching the date to potentially be moving out of City Hall, and part of that will depend a little bit later tonight on the agenda, on selecting a moving company for the, to assist with that, and then we'll be able to set the date, the official move would take place. We should have another meeting in this facility, and then in November, we will most likely be looking at an alternate location, either Bridgeview Center or Law Enforcement Center, is what we're looking at right now. So we'll get that squared out, and should have an update at the next meeting on where we'll be for November. The, last Thursday, there was a ribbon cutting for MCG, which is working through the city very quickly here. They were, they're in the process of bringing fiber to the home, or to homes and businesses. And I have an update from them, in addition to opening their building at 419 Church Street, which they have an office available for customer interaction, and they're open Monday to Friday, eight to five. People are interested in looking at when they might be available in their part of the city, is a project's going to take a few years. So we're talking three years build out, is what is anticipated, but the first section, section one, is looking at potentially being able to serve houses as early as next week. And other sections will be updated into next year. So if you're looking at where you fall on the map, and when you'll have, could have service available as an alternative, reach out to them, and they can help you out there. Let's see. That is all I had for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Phil? Okay. The next item on the agenda is departmental, no, I'm sorry. This is where I ask if we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak on any of tonight's agenda items, and we do have one person that wants to speak on an agenda item, and we also have another individual that wants to speak towards the end of our council meeting, where we ask if anybody wants to speak on non-agenda items. Is there anybody else besides these two individuals that plan on speaking tonight? If not, I'll go ahead and call those people up when we get to that portion of the agenda. Is that okay? Okay. We have no public hearings tonight, and there's no ordinances, so we'll move into departmental reports, and I believe, Jean, you're going to present.
I'll read it first. Purchase of John Deere 1570 mower for Parks Department. Recommendation: Accept the bid for a John Deere 1570 mower from Sinclair John Deere of Atoma in the amount of $34,685.34.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Consider the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Jean.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. The Parks Department has obtained a bid from Sinclair John Deere of Atoma for a John Deere 1570 front mount mower for $34,685.34. The bid is attached. The mower will be purchased from the State of Iowa Bid Program. The new mower will replace mower number 51, which will be sold at the next city of Atoma online auction. The purchase of the new mower was approved by the City of Atoma Fleet Committee, and an evaluation of mower number 51 is attached.
Does council have any questions for Jean?
Jean, just to confirm, so everyone is aware that this is a budgeted item, correct?
Yes. This will be coming out of the current budget.
If there's no other questions from council, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Draft a letter of approval to DNR for the burning of structure by the Atoma Fire Department. Recommendation: Council approval for a letter to DNR that allows the Atoma Fire Department to burn structure located at 11653 Delonaga Road, and authorize the mayor to sign the letter.
Is there a recommendation to approve, is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
And interim fire chief, Pat Short, did you want to cover this?
This is a property that's owned by Indian Hills. They allowed the police department and the fire department to do training at this home, and through some different red tape with DNR and different organizations, this got held up for a while. So this is just to get it cleared up, get it off the table, and get it taken care of for them.
So it's my understanding the property's been demolished, and it's all piled up, and they're going to let you guys do a fire training exercise by burning it up?
Yes, sir.
And you've done this kind of stuff before, I believe?
Quite a few times.
Okay. Does council have any questions for interim fire chief, Pat Short?
Yeah. Quick question. How many controlled burns have you done this year so far?
There's been one other.
And you can do two a year, correct?
You can do two a year, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Consideration of contracting Johnson Moving and Storage to assist with the temporary relocation of City Hall due to pending construction. Recommendation: Approve contracting with Johnson Moving and Storage to assist with temporary relocation.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Phil, I believe you're going to take this.
Yeah. So as I mentioned just a little bit during my report, talking about the relocation of City Hall into the depot building, we had reached out, staff reached out to local moving companies to identify anyone who was available in the timeframe we needed, and would be interested in completing that work. We need to move everything off of first floor, and some of the items off of second and third floor. And either they'd be moved over, the items would be moved over to the depot building, or we'd be looking at things that we didn't need to access during that time period into the basement or second floor, and then replacing them once the construction work was done. We received one bid back, or one proposal back, from Johnson Moving and Storage, and that estimate was $17,775. And that's to move the items out of the building over to the depot or within the building as needed. They're able to assist with that move, we believe, the third week of October, ahead of the asbestos abatement and project construction. If it is approved, I will reach out to them to verify. We're looking at, to see if they would have availability the fourth week of October to work around the needs of staff, and be a little bit more, better for us to be able to do that. So, so either the third or fourth week is what we're looking at, depending on their availability, but they were available the third week.
Does council have any questions for Phil?
Phil, where the, where would this financial obligation come from?
So somewhere where we talked about last week with the addition for the construction that left enough available to pay for the moving here.
Thank you.
And that was from, just to recap from that, staff positions that hadn't been previously filled, that we'd look to, and adjust that, take the dollars from that, to pay for this project.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, this, this price is just to move everybody from City Hall down, there'll be another price eventually to move people back?
Correct. And in that timeframe, we, you know, might be able to see, do it over a longer period, or move people back, and might be able to utilize some more staff for that, but to get everybody, we're basically looking at the possibility of, we'll say, for lack of better terms, shutting down City Hall for that week, to be able to pack up, move over, unpack, and get everything set up. So we'll have more information out to the public when all those dates are certified. And, but yes, that's, that's what we're looking at. That's just the one-way move there. Some of the stuff we're moving, we're still scanning, we're still doing those things, so not everything will move back. It might be a little bit less coming back, but I would anticipate similar, which we would then be able to budget for, because we'll, we'll know that estimated cost at least.
And then, we haven't got a decision made yet on where we're going to hold council meetings during this next year, year and a half, correct?
Correct. I did reach out to the school district, they gave me a price for holding meetings in their media room, where they hold their meetings. It's a little bit more than what I would hope. We do have the Bridgeview Center facility, you know, it's not as, it's not set up as, for recording meetings and broadcasting meetings, it's not set up as well, but it is a city-owned facility, so we would have the ability to go rent-free there. And then the Law Enforcement Center may provide some, some possibility as well. That might be a little bit better in the media, but there could be more conflict with dates and things as well. So we're going to verify that, and look out for the next year, 18 months, to schedule those.
Okay. I guess, you know, just to comment, I guess I would hope that the school district would be a little bit more willing to give us a little bit better rate, especially since we just helped fund a tennis court project with them. So, you know, I don't know, but I would hope that they'd be a little bit more realistic on what they would charge us to have council meetings there, because their room is really set up very well for the kind of stuff that we do here, so there'll be more information on that to come. So, any questions, further questions for Phil?
Kind of, a little bit unrelated to this, but very related, given the short time constraint that we have, is the electrical and the technology over there in a place that we can adequately move everybody over there and resume critical services when this is taken care of? And I guess the second, the follow-up to that is, if it's not, are we going to have people stepping over each other's toes trying to move in?
So, staff, park staff, the electricians, Edward IT, they've all been working very diligently the last couple weeks, at least, maybe three weeks, to prep that area, once we realized that most of City Hall would be moving over there. So I think there's probably some on first floor that'll need to be done, because we've determined, I believe, that engineering will move into the lower part of, of the depot. So there may be some of that electrical work that'll be done, need to be done, but they're going to be able to stay in the building just a little bit longer than the rest of us. So that part is done. We're working on scheduling painting for the facility, and staff is going to assist with the painting on that. We did go out and get quotes, but they came back, I want to say it was just under $35,000 for painting, and so we're looking at just staff doing the painting ahead of that. And all that should be done prior to moving, and it was another reason for looking at that third or even fourth week of this month, is to make sure all that work is done, but as far as I know, there's some minor construction that's still being done, so not 100% electrical, but the lines for the, the fiber broadband, all that is set to be dropped, about a half-day work is what I understand to do that, just to verify where all the desks will be, drop that stuff in, and it's already laid out, it just needs to be dropped into each room.
Okay. And last question, and I'll shut up about it. What's the communication plan with the public going into the last week or so of October, so everybody knows where they can go, and where they can go inside the building for each of the services?
Yeah. So we'll hit everything we can, as far as press releases, putting all the information out. I said after tomorrow, I should have an idea of the dates that we'll be looking at for the move, and we'll get that out, any media platform we can. We are in the process, I think, well, there's on the consent agenda for the Public Information Officer, so that list has now been certified. We'll look to hire somebody from that list. They may not start as quick as we would need for this, but we'll get that out and continue to educate the public on where we'll be during this process.
And there'll be some signage probably put on first floor, too, won't there?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll have some signage on the outside of the building to let people know that we're relocated, and where the address for that, and we're working on getting signage both outside and inside the building at the depot, to help direct people on where they need to go.
Okay. And I guess, and maybe that's probably what she was getting ready to say, that we do have a lot of non-native speakers here, is, is that going to be something that's going to be translated out for people that aren't native speakers?
Do you want it done in 28 languages?
No. I'm saying at least, at least the primary language.
Yes.
Hispanic?
Spanish. Yeah. I think we can accommodate that.
Okay.
And there is an elevator, even though we're going to be on the second floor, the public will be able to use a stairway or an elevator to get upstairs, so it's handicapped accessible.
Yeah. I think we have a lot of resources in our community that we can access to ensure that we do have that information out for all to understand, too.
Yeah.
And I was also going to say, ensuring that it's on our website, and if we can put it in multiple languages on our website, too, that would be great.
Yeah. The, the website, if we put it on there, there is a Google Translate, so it should be able to translate to multiple, whatever Google has, dozens of languages.
I also think it's an opportunity for us to get the community involved. As far as painting, we can go into the high school, you think, and get some artistes from there, and come in and help with the paint project. That's all we can do is ask.
Has a lot of city staff volunteered to help with that paint project? I'd like putting you on the spot, but...
So we've got a number of associates that are going to be helping paint. We opened it up kind of as a paint party for our staff.
Right.
To go in. Now, the thing is, though, we are going to paint it one color, simply because when we are done with that building, we are going to lease it out, or be able to open it up to other people.
Right.
So we do have one standard color that we're going to go in and paint.
It's not pink, is it?
It is not pink.
It's a neutral, neutral color. Neutral color.
It's a very neutral color, and so, but yeah, we've opened it up to our employees that maybe want something a little different from their day-to-day, to go in, and they can do four-hour blocks of, of painting, and we've got quite a few employees that are willing to do that.
That's good. I appreciate you for kind of spearheading that. Any other questions for Phil?
I can help finger paint.
Two, Jane, first.
If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move into resolutions, and I think we have 12 of them, so...
Resolution number 118-2023, approving a professional services agreement between the City of Atoma and Garden &amp; Associates LTD for the Milner Street Portofield-to-Hand reconstruction project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 118-2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Okay. And I think Phil Bergmeyer, our interim public works director, is going to handle this one.
Thank you. This is an agreement to provide professional services in conjunction with designing and bidding and construction staking for Milner Street from Portofield to Hand. The estimated cost includes staking South Milner Street only, so if we have to go outside that for sewer separation, they will have an additional fee for that, but I don't think we'll have to. This project will include complete reconstruction of the roadway, the storm sewer will be separated, the sanitary sewer will be reconstructed or rehabilitated as determined throughout design. This street is solidly in the top five of our complaints. The water main was redone two years ago, I believe, so the water main's done and out from under the street. We have three streets in-house that we have designed for next year, and we just don't have the people to get a fourth one done. We'd like to have, we have the people to inspect for, so we'd like to outsource this one to Garden, to have them design it, so we can have, have a full slate of streets for next year.
Does council have any questions for Phil?
When you say "people," help me understand what you mean.
So, we had, when I started here, we had two engineers and design tech on staff, and then we had about five aides or assistants that would help with design. Right now, we have just me for engineer, but I'm also interim public works director now. We don't have an assistant engineer anymore, we don't have a design tech, and we only have three inspectors, so we just don't have the people to go out and, and get the designs done like we did in the past.
Those are still approved FTEs, though, in your department, aren't they?
I believe all those positions are still approved, just have to fill them.
So hopefully with the Gallagher study and everything, we're going to be in a better position to be more competitive in salaries and stuff, because I know that's been an issue in the past, especially with people in your department.
Yeah.
Especially engineers and stuff, so hopefully we're going to be able to get some people hired to get you some help, because I know you're really short-staffed in public works.
We got one engineering aide hired, full-time, a couple weeks ago, so that helped.
Good.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 145-2023, approving an employee telecommuting policy. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 145-2023.
Move the recommendations presented. Second.
Okay. And Barb Kojo, our HR director, is going to cover this.
Thank you, sir. So this is just a policy that came at the recommendation from Gallagher, and also when we have done employee personnel manual reviews, with the changing of our times and being able to work remotely or places other than your designated location, that's where this policy has come from.
So when I read through this, I did see that administration and the department heads and stuff, you've all got together and determined pretty much which positions would be appropriate for telecommuting, if people want to request that?
Yes. So we, department heads, we've talked about this policy twice, we've taken feedback from them for, with it. We've also talked at our supervisor meeting, same thing, talked about the policy itself, opened it up for any communication, any feedback that's come back. We did go through all of the positions and make sure that these were all positions that we felt had the ability to telecommute.
Is the mayor one of them? I'm just kidding.
I don't know that we put the mayor in there.
I'm just kidding. I shouldn't have probably said that. Any questions for Barb? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 151-2023, awarding the contract and approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance for the Asphalt Street Repair Program 2023. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 151-2023.
Move the recommendations presented. Second.
Mr. Bergmeyer, he's up again.
Thank you, Mayor. So this project is our Asphalt Street Repair Program, and we're using it this year to replace North Adams Street. I combined the award and approving the contract documents, just to speed the process along, because we're getting close to the end of construction season, and the street is in a state where it needs to be fixed before winter. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atoma on September 20th. One bid was received, the low bidder was Norris Asphalt Pavement Company of Atoma. We posted this on the website, we posted it on Master Builders of Iowa, and usually just receive one bid for it, it's normal for, for asphalt work. All the required bonds and certificates and insurance are included in the packet and ready to go.
So does this mean that North Adams is going to get, like, fully redone?
Yeah. We're going to completely do a full-depth asphalt street, new, new concrete curb and gutters with asphalt pavement. All this, this was, it was torn up during sewer separation, so all the sewer underneath is new. There's nothing, no surprises here, it's just all surface work.
Council have any questions for Phil on this project?
Phil, I usually ask this about once a year, what's the delta between the price of asphalt and the price of concrete right now?
Depending on the street, pretty comparable. Usually a small residential street, the concrete's cheaper. I know when I looked at Lake Road earlier, and asphalt was slightly cheaper, they're pretty comparable. In this case, concrete wasn't an option because of the timeframe to get it done, asphalt's much faster. I don't have a percentage in how much more expensive asphalt is than, than concrete, though, but it's getting closer now. Asphalt was much more expensive for a while, but concrete prices keep going up, and they're catching up to asphalt again.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is hopefully going to get done yet this fall, right?
This will get done this fall. Yeah, we, we talked to Norris, and they have a window in October to come back and get it done.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Resolution number 152-2023, awarding the contract and approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance for the HMA PCC Street Crack Repair Program 2023. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 152-2023.
Move the recommendations presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
Thank you. This project is one of our annual preventative maintenance programs, and consists of sealing cracks in streets throughout the City of Atoma. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atoma on September 20th. The project was advertised on the City of Atoma website and Master Builders. Two bids were received, the low bidder was Parking Lot Specialties out of Carlisle, Iowa, in the amount of $48,000, or $46,800. Required bond, certificate of insurance, and contract for Parking Lot Specialties is included in the packet. Any questions?
I guess I had a question. When you talk about a street crack repair program, what do you fill these cracks with? Is it asphalt or concrete, or is it kind of a permanent fix, or just a temporary fix?
It's to seal water out of the street, so we're concentrating on asphalt streets on this, this year.
Because there's 17 that you had identified.
Yeah. So we're going to start on North Court, which we just paved this year, and we want to, we want to seal the, the asphalt, and then the concrete barrier, or the concrete seam at the gutter. We haven't done that before, but I've heard people had good, good luck with that. But the sealing is a hot-pore sealant. It's in a big kettle, it comes in blocks, they, they melt it down, and it's applied with a, with like a wand, it was like a pressure washer, but it just has hot-pore sealant come out, and it, it seals water out of the street.
So it's pretty durable, that lasts for quite a while?
Yeah. I'd say five to seven years it'll stay sealed, but even after that, it'll stay in place, and even though it's not completely sealed and immort, it'll keep incompressibles out of the cracks, and it'll, it'll block bulk water intrusion.
Council have any questions for Phil on this project? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway? Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 156, 2023, approving updates to the personnel policy. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 156, 2023.
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Okay, Barb, I believe this one's yours.
Thank you. This is, since you proved the telecommuting policy, this is just adding that policy to our personnel policy book. We added it under benefits. There's two paragraphs that are in there.
Counsel, have any questions for Barb? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 157, 2023, approving the Second Amendment to the Design Contract between the City of Atumwa and Willett Hoffmann and Associates for the City Hall Improvements Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 157, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
Thank you. The city of Atumwa entered into a design contract with Willett Hoffmann and Associates on October 5th, 2021, and an amended professional services agreement on May 15th, 2023. This is a Second Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement and will cover the construction phase of this project. It provides for site visits by the architect and mechanical engineer, provides for shop drawing reviews, and makes them available for virtual and onsite construction visits as well as answering RFIs. Thirty-one thousand dollars of the amendment will go to Willett Hoffmann Associates, who are the architectural design firm, and eighty-five hundred will go to West Plains Engineering, who is the mechanical electrical design company, for a total of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Does counsel have any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Resolution number 158, 2023, approving change order number one and accepting the work as final and complete and approving the final pay request for the Lake Road Culverts Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 158, 2023.
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
Thank you. This project consisted of removing and replacing three culverts along Lake Road. These culverts are being completed ahead of the Lake Road Reconstruction Project. They were bid separately because it's a different, a different line of work, and it'll give time for the the backfill to settle before we reconstruct the street. Change order number one decreased the contract by two thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars and forty cents for the reduction of quantity or for reduction in quantities. Rock and Loaded Decor Iowa has completed the above round first work according to the plans and specs. This will authorize change order number one and release the final payment and retainage. The original contract amount was fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars with the change order, the new, taking off two thousand two hundred and fourteen thousand forty cents. The new contract amount is a hundred and twelve dollars, a hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents.
And that's for three culverts, right?
Yes, there was two thirty-inch culverts and a, well, it was a fit forty-eight. We upsized it to fifty-four because it was a little bit undersized, I think.
Much less expensive than bridges.
Much less. These are actually expensive for CMP culverts, too, because most of them are broken back culverts, so they have drops under the road, which is unusual in town, but I guess it's common out in rural areas like that.
So the city owns that first part of Lake Road as you're going out and that changes into county. How much of Lake Road is eventually going to be redone?
About eight thousand feet. It's it's a lot.
So will that involve the county in that, too?
No, that's just to the county.
Okay.
City limits.
Okay.
Yeah, we own, the county actually replaced their part of Lake Road. Maybe five or six years ago.
Okay.
Kind of blends together that far away, but I believe it was about five or six years ago, so they have a brand-new pavement up to the city limits.
Counsel, have any questions for Phil on this project?
I don't necessarily on the culvert part, but since we brought up Lake Road, and this is probably one of the last times I'm going to get a chance to ask you about Lake Road. When you guys go to redo Lake Road for the city, you are taking, going to take into account the kind of traffic that runs out that road, correct? The heaviness of the traffic that goes out there?
Yeah, we're going to account for the truck traffic. I know there's a lot of truck traffic that does go out there.
Yeah, I believe that's part of the reason that that road is the way it is, is because there's a lot more heavy truck traffic out there than we anticipated.
I believe you're right in that assessment, yes.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Any other questions for Phil? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 159, 2023, approving changes to the Compensation Handbook. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 159, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Second.
You and Phil should have just sat side by side tonight.
Should have just put all the words together.
This is a Phil and Barb show tonight. Okay, Barb, it's all yours.
Thank you, sir. So we had published the results of the Gallagher study in July, and the intent was to try and get that out, get going through all of the data that we had. Since that time, we have had some employees that have come to us with some questions or some concerns regarding the, where they fell on that classification framework. So this outlined some of those changes that we are recommending to make. The first change was we had, the Gallagher study came back and had said that our superintendent down at Water Pollution Control, they recommended it as water superintendent, but that could be either there or at Water Works. So we are going to take it back to the Water Pollution Control Facility Superintendent, so it better identifies that job title. It's just a change in wording. There's no other change or anything there. The second change that's on there that we're proposing is to change the accountant position from a grade seven to a grade 10. In the packet that you all received, there's a pretty detailed report as to all of the research that we did on all of these positions. On all of them, we looked at comparable cities. Many of our sister cities are also going through compensation studies, and so a lot of them are also changing their salaries and have changed their salaries within the last six months from the time that the initial data was gathered. We've also gone out to the Department of Labor, looking at what national averages are. A lot of those are from 2022. We've got some others that are from like 2019, and we've aged some of that data. Taking a look at just really any data point that we could find, that's what went into all of this research, is trying to find out what those averages are and try and looking at cost of living indexes to make the best adjustments that we can. With the accountant position, we have had that open since May, and we did have an initial round of applicants. And at feedback that we had gotten initially was that that salary was rather low to find someone that would be able to go into that, into the finance department and be able to help us out as an accountant. So based on the information that we gathered, we are asking for the accountant to change from a grade seven to a grade 10. Change number three is our, three and four are our electricians. Again, based on the information that we received. Initially, the information we received, we understood it was to be the master electrician, and it was actually for a journeyman electrician. So as we sat and went through all of that, again, it justified moving those couple of steps based on some of the different licensure requirements. When we went out to other sister cities, again, trying to talk with them about what specifically does your maintenance electrician do and what licenses are required, that's where we found that there was a big difference. The mechanic position was another one when the, all the information came back, sat down looking at that mechanic and based on the requirements of that position, you're going to need a little bit of experience to come in and be able to work on our city fleet. Where some of our other positions, you can come in and we can teach you. With the mechanic, there is, there does have to be some type of knowledge beforehand coming into it. The other thing with the mechanic is we are now on our second round, third round of testing for that position because we do anticipate some retirements coming up soon, and we are struggling to find qualified candidates for that. Garage supervisor, again, another position that we are recommending to change. And that is the position that manages the mechanics, and then they are also in charge of all of the fleet for the city. So when we look at that position and compare it to many other cities call it a fleet supervisor, that's where we came up with a lot of those recommendations as well. And then change number seven listed on there, that's just the title, and we're, we're recommending changing it from an airport line technician to an airport facilities technician. Again, it's the same exact job, but when we go out and do comparable research and things like that, we can find more data points with an airport facilities technician than we do with a line technician. So it's more about just synchronizing those names. Those few positions that are on there that have asterisks on them, so the maintenance electrician, the senior electrician, and the mechanic position, those actually fall underneath our collective bargaining agreements. So there will be no change made to salary effective this year. That would be something that what we would do is we would take that to the bargaining table when we go to talk about the collective bargaining agreement. And present that as here is what we believe that those salaries should be. So there is no direct change, but what it is, is it is updating our compensation handbook to say this is what we believe this is, and then when we go to the negotiation table, we would present that to the, to them as well. The other thing that's listed on there is there were two other roles that were questioned, and based on all of the research that was done. My recommendation would be to keep those two roles as they are, because again, based on all of the comparable city data that we received, the national data, everything like that, it showed that those. Positions were in the right spot. They were assigned to the right grade. So I wanted to include that in there so that way we had it, and we saw that the same work went into those as the ones that we also are recommending to increase.
The question that I've got, and it was a little confusing to me, is for these positions, if the council approves these positions, they're going to go from one pay grade to another. I guess I still don't understand why that wouldn't be effective in this current fiscal year, because when we did the other pay ranges increases, you know, and the Gallagher study got done, we didn't wait till their collective bargaining agreement came into effect.
All of the collective bargain, none of the collective bargaining agreement positions have had, had a salary change. Because they have a current collective bargaining agreement that is valid through June 30th of 2024, so they have already negotiated what that salary was going to be, and so it was already set. And so what we have done with this compensation handbook is we have gone and said, this is what we believe those salaries should be. So after we do the vote this fall, we will go to the table with those collective bargaining agreements and and say, here is what we recommend, or here is what we are seeing for equipment operator or mechanic or lab technician or whatever those positions are. And then we will have to negotiate with those unions to make those salaries active. To clarify.
I'm still a little bit confused, because I thought when the Gallagher study was done, there was some people that did go up in pay ranges, or was it just steps?
So there are some people that did, but it was all those that were not represented because they did not have a collective bargaining agreement that covered them. So any of those positions that are actually covered under that collective bargaining agreement, that is what they had negotiated, and that was going to be their salary until the end of, till June 30th of 24.
That makes sense. I appreciate that clarification.
However, the police department did, because they were at the time when this was happening, correct? Correct, so the police had their own, they have their own contract. So we've got police that came up last year. This year, we've got fire, muni, and public works that are coming up, and then next year we'll have library that's coming up. So the current contract that they have, we would have to open that entire contract in order to to go through any types of changes or anything.
Counsel, have any other questions for Barb? Thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely.
I was a little confused. I am sometimes. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 160, 2023, removing special assessments applied to 312 East Alta Vista from Resolution number 41, 2023. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 160, 2023.
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
You're not Phil or Barb, but I guess I'll let you speak.
I'll go quick.
Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution deals with 312 East Alta Vista, which is the site of the former St. Joe Hospital. Resolution 41, 2023, applied special assessments in the amount of three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for nuisance abatement and weed mowing. That was done prior to that. There's a pending real estate transaction that would have this property change ownership. And this resolution will remove those special assessments in order to make that transition and make it possible to have someone new that can put this property kind of in a better direction. And so the staff recommendation is to remove those assessments.
Does counsel have any questions for Zach?
So Zach, we're removing the, this thirty-one hundred dollars in fees to this company that has let this property sit forever. They are going to sell this property, correct?
Yeah, so the, the transaction's a little more complicated than that. And some of the terms we don't want to get into yet because there's, you know, interest in not.
Absolutely.
You know, real estate transactions can be that way a little bit. But yeah, this would make it so that the new owner is not responsible for these or that they don't get paid at the time of closing.
Okay, so does this, okay, so clarify for me. This does alleviate all, even if they don't sell the property, they are still not going to have to pay this fee? Or does this only, is this only active if they, if somebody new takes over the property?
So there has already been a change in the current mortgage on the property. And. That would have some effect really as to how the negotiator, as to how the deal would sort of unfold, but no, there would not be anyone who would have to pay these even if that were a fall mark.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Zach.
Yep.
Any other questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
abstain.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Resolution number 161, 2023, fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand dollar general obligation capital loan notes. Of the City of Atumwa, State of Iowa, for general corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 161, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Phil, I believe you're going to take this.
Yes, honorable mayor. So next item on the agenda, and these are maybe in a little bit reverse order, but I think that's still, regardless of everything, we still need to do this piece of it, in my opinion. What this is, the city council expressed an interest in pursuing the purchase of capital assets associated with operating Cedar Creek Golf Course from the current operator. Combined assets hold an estimated value of over five hundred thousand dollars. That was stuff that was discussed at a work session a couple of weeks ago. Based upon the amount, staff is recommending consideration of borrowing proceeds to pay that off over anywhere from one to five years. The details of that, we're not borrowing money, but it's just saying, leaving the option open, should the council want to borrow any funds for equipment in the future related to this. In order to do that, we need to hold a public hearing. It could be decided after the public hearing. There is no interest in borrowing. But at least it leaves the option open should we need to do that in the future. And depending on negotiation with the future operator, it may be worked into a deal with them as far as the, the purchase of equipment. And that could be reimbursed. So in order to keep all options open, I'm requesting to set the public hearing to be held on October 17th at the next council meeting. And then we would go from there, but the first step is to establish a date for the public hearing.
Administrator, sorry, mayor, I have questions. I apologize. I jumped the gun.
Go ahead.
Administrator, I just have a question. So should the council, no matter which way we go, the, there are still things that we would be contractually obligated to pay. To the golf course, like to get, for that contract to end, for Greg to leave and to retire, there would still be things that we are contractually obligated to pay if we decide even not to purchase the equipment, correct?
Correct. Yeah, and I was going to get into that a little bit more in the next one, but.
Well, I just want to make sure that we all are aware that even no matter how the next one goes, there are still things that we are contractually obligated to pay. And like you said, you're going to get into that further, but there would be a need to at least have a public hearing whether or not we borrow or not.
Correct, and and again, this is only to set the public hearing, so the only thing that we would be out is the cost of publication to let the public know of the public hearing. Even, you know, if it's approved and on the 17th there's a public hearing, there's still no obligation to borrow or bond any funds. You would only at that point be holding a public hearing. And it would take, you know, some issue before you to approve up or down as far as actually borrowing any proceeds. So this is just leaving the door open in case that's the best course of financing, anything, the equipment purchase or any other costs that would be associated with, with Cedar Creek Golf Course.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Resolution number 162, 2023, authorizing the purchase of used equipment from Integrity Golf Group LLC for golf course operations at Cedar Creek Golf Course. Recommendation pass and adopt. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 162, 2023.
I'm gonna make the rec, or the, uh, recommendation that we table this item.
Second.
Table it till the next council meeting?
Till a further, till a future council meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I can give my justification for that, if need be.
So I have a first and a second, do you want me to go ahead and take the role?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Excuse me. So does the person need to speak on this, if it's tabled? Doug, you want to talk?
Uh, I think if you tabled it, that pushes it, so there's nothing to talk about.
Yeah.
Well, he could talk at the end of the meeting, though.
Yeah, he could bring up at the end of the meeting.
Okay. So if it's tabled, you can speak at the end on the part of non-agenda items, Doug, if you still wanna speak?
Moving on?
Yep.
Resolution number 163, 2023, adopting an amended development agreement between the City of Atumwa and the Atumwa Legacy Foundation for Capital Lofts Downtown Housing Project, and adopting a procurement policy for the Capital Lofts Downtown Housing Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 163, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you, Mayor, thank you, counsel. Uh, the city was awarded $300,000 grant for the Capital Lofts project at 231 East Main. Uh, the building owner and the developer for the project is the Atumwa Legacy Foundation, and they're already underway in completing the project. Uh, this is a new program that was created just with COVID relief money for a small round of grants, and because it wasn't a program that IEDA had done for a long time, they've come across a few, uh, issues in how the program was rolled out. The first is that they provided a form development agreement for cities to use with the development, uh, with the developers, and we used the form agreement for our development agreement, and it included a section which referenced the wrong program. So they've asked us to go back and adopt the development agreement with that amendment. Um, they also did not, in their original guidance, give, uh, direction on how to do the procurement policy. They've since come up with how they want people to do the procurement policy. We're in a more fortunate position than other cities, because we did not go out and procure services that weren't already compliant, so that's good. Um, but we do have to adopt a procurement policy for this grant, uh, which is compliant with 2 CFR 200. Um, and so Legacy Foundation has adopted the same procurement policy for the program as we're adopting here, uh, basically just spells out for this program what the thresholds are to, uh, have to bid, what the thresholds are to have to provide multiple estimates, all of those sorts of things.
Does counsel have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is where I ask it, there's the audience members that would like to speak on non-agenda items, and we do have two individuals that would like to speak. Uh, you'll each have three minutes to, uh, give your, uh, information or your, uh, uh, opinion or whatever, um, and we'll, uh, start by having each of you come up individually and speak into the podium, give your name and your address, and we'll start with Doug Tackle. Fine, that's okay. The next, uh, individual is Mr. Mitch Niner.
Uh, good evening. I'd just like to make a couple comments on the, the dam situation that everybody is, you know, seeing and, and all that. You know, I was on council the entire time, you know, '08 to '16, when that issue came in front of us a couple different times, and, and, you know, we was told at that time that when Red Rocks project was done, that our dam would possibly look different. And at the time, you know, we listened to him, I think, but, you know, you guys gotta understand, at the time that I was on council, the communication between the Atumwa Waterworks and, and the council or city hall was very, very slim. So we didn't know a lot at that time. But, but, you know, having said that, you know, we, we are all, I know probably every one of us, myself included, could be most of you people, we're all guilty at some point of kicking the can down the road, you know, as to say, no matter what the issue is. And I think it got to the point where, why would we spend that kinda money to try to start coming across them gates? You know, gate eight, they started on gate eight. But it's one of those deals where they put us in a, in a bind, because why would we spend money to redo gates if they're just gonna take them out or open them? So I think the project was put off, but now here we are, you know, looking at having to do something with the gate. But, but I'd just like to offer a comment and a suggestion, I guess. They had the meeting in the parking lot Saturday down there with a whole bunch of citizens. Tim Albert showed up down there, which I commend him for, obviously, because he didn't have to do that, but he wanted to throw out what he could throw out, because it's, you know, some of those letters that they get are the, are the secret letters, you know, from the federal government. And, and he tried to explain what was going on with the dam situation, but, but two things stuck really fast in my mind, where he said they was thinking about giving up the, what the FERC permit on the turbines, and just turning the dam over to the state. People, I would hope to think you would step in and not let that happen, and I don't think we need any knee-jerk reactions by the Water Works that's, that's gonna cause us maybe more grief. Um, you know, I'm probably the last person that would say, do we need to take the Water Works back over to take control of this situation? I don't know, I'm probably the last person that probably should be saying that, but, you know, at some point, I hope you people jump in, even though they're their own entity, and protect the interests that we own. Um, the second thing that he said that's, that stuck in my mind instantly, and as you guys all well know, sometimes I'm a fireball, and sometimes I say stuff maybe I shouldn't say, but, but he said, I'm not a politician, I don't really know what to do, I'm not a politician. Well, man, you better be a politician really fast, because that's the only way we're gonna, we're gonna get the funds to fix that. My suggestion would be, like the sewer separation, Mark would be one of the only ones that, that's been here long enough to remember some of that, multiple trips to Washington, DC, to meet with our representatives there, they set up the, all the meetings in the other offices, you'll have multiple meetings when you go there, like Tim Alberts, Phil, you know, maybe a board, maybe a member of the Board of Supervisors, somebody needs to go to Washington, DC and start pleading our case, because there was a one time that we didn't go to Washington, DC, that when we come back, we was pretty pleased at what we got, and the sewer separation was one of it. You know, we was looking at just a fraction of the years to do all that separation until we come back from Washington, DC. I mean, it's just a suggestion, but I, I, you know, we've got some time, a little bit of time, but I think it'd be worth your while to get a group of people and get some meetings set up, and, and try to get some federal funds to take care of that dam, you know, one way or the other, whatever we have to do. I personally think we've been played by up north, but, you know, that's just my own opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Niner.
But I just, I just thought I'd throw that out there and thank you for your time.
If, if I could comment on, on what Mitch just said, you know, I, I fully agree with one of the things that, two, uh, two of the things I very much agree with you on. Number one is the communication between, uh, city hall and the Water Works, that, that's always been an issue, at least since I've sat on here, and I'm struggling right now, because as city council members, we're getting asked questions, and there's this onslaught from social media regarding the Water Works, and aside from little nuggets that I've had in, in conversation with Tim Alberts, none of that's been official conversation, and none of us know what's going on. And to me, you know, as the people that are, that are elected to look out for the City of Atumwa, that's a really big issue, that we don't have any idea what's going on. So that's the first thing. And the second thing, I was one of the folks who did go out to Washington, DC, uh, this last time to argue on behalf of, of the city with the, with the sewer separation project, with the EPA and the, and the federal government, and I can tell you, he is absolutely right in the fact that we do need to have a much stronger advocacy effort between the, the city, the county, and, and, uh, the Water Works, because, you know, he's right, we're not gonna get anything done if we just sit here and wait it out, and, and again, we're not gonna even be able to talk about that unless we know what's going on.
Yeah, you need to gain control of it. Thank you.
Do you have anything you wanna say? Is there anybody else that would like to speak on any non-agenda items? Okay, um, the next thing on our agenda, before we adjourn, is there any announcements that the city council, uh, would like to make? I guess I would like to encourage or remind people to vote next Tuesday in the primary.
I have an announcement. Um, so last week we went to the, or last week or two weeks ago, we went to the League of Cities and, um, had, I learned a ton and, um, had a great time learning from other communities, too. Um, in that, too, the, um, at dinner, we also talked about how we can help engage our community more, and just bring more pride and positivity to our community. Um, and one of the things I always see around this time of year is, um, houses decorated, um, some really great Halloween houses. So, um, we are excited to announce that, um, we are going to do, don't kill me for the name, but a spooky house contest. I couldn't think of anything else, let's be honest. A spooky house contest, um, it's open to all residents of Atumwa who love to get into the Halloween spirit. Um, so to enter the contest, you can, um, email me by October, uh, 17th, and, um, my email can be found on the website, we're also gonna put this out to people, too. So you email me your name and address, and then, um, our addresses will be given to the mayor, one of our council people, and Chief Farrington, who will be our judges. The winner will be announced at the first meeting, um, in November, and the winner will receive, um, some kinda certificate, and then we're gonna start a, um, a plaque with our winners' names on it, which will be located in city hall slash the X, or the depot for right now. Um, and then the judging will actually occur from October 25th to October 30th. Um, so look out for, on our Facebook page, and we're gonna send a press release out, too, but, um, again, we just, we want some more positivity in the city, and we're hoping that this will bring some, too. That's what I got.
I still say we call it spooky nights and lights.
Perfect, spooky nights and lights. Okay, spooky nights and lights, thanks.
Anybody have any other announcements they'd like to share?
It's Sandra's birthday Friday, evidently.
It's who's Sandra's birthday?
It's Russ's tonight.
Oh, yeah, Russ's birthday today, happy birthday, Russ.
I'm old, 29 years old today.
Plus, plus.
Wow.
Don't mind the grace.
Sorry, had to.
At least she didn't say how old she was, so. She shouldn't get too upset.
Oh, no, I'm proud of how I am, but it's not the sixth Friday, that's where you got it wrong.
My bad.
October 13th.
Oh, okay. Okay, if there's no other announcements, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our city council meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and thank you, everybody, for attending our Atumwa City Council meeting